The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracchia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley.
Can we hold it down, please?
Alderwoman Ingracchia. Alderman Conway. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Twenty-four present.
Quorum being present, unless everyone in the chambers is able to stand, please rise for prayer. Before we begin prayer today, I'm going to ask everybody to join me in a moment of silence for all the families and the people who lost their lives in Las Vegas this week and their first responders. So join me in a moment of silence. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the 26th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, Mr. Larry Powell and John Watson, and also the city of St. Louis Sheriff, Mr. Vernon Best. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 14th.
Mr. President, Mr. Demetrius L. Alfred from Firefighters Local 73, and Greg Redman. Also, I would like to have Dale Rousas from our partners of the street.
All right, excellent. Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today Keith Taylor and Jeff Hines from the carpenters district. I'd also like to introduce Sean Weller from Congressman Clay's office. And I'd also like to introduce my special guest Vernon Best from the sheriff's office.
Alderman from the 23rd. Do you have Fred Searsie from the plumbers and pipe fitters, and Taylor and, anyway, the carpenter guy's over here.
There you go.
Stand up.
We know.
Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I've got some very special guests today. I've got my mother and father, Joe and Claire Coder, here. I've got my in-laws, James and, all right, my in-laws, James and Donna DiSario, and my lovely wife, Susan Coder.
Alderwoman from the 11th.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to introduce Anthony Lancia from Association and Journal Contractors.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have three special honored guests. My first guest is one of the best neighbors in the whole city of St. Louis, Ms. Doris Otis.
Welcome, Ms. Otis.
Charlie Hinden Lighter from the Realist Association, and Sheila Jones from Amara,
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my honored guest this morning Anthony Lancia from the AGC, and also Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office, and would also like to have Susan Coder as my special guest because the alderman from the 7th ward is very lucky to have her as his bride.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest, all those of you whose name were not called, don't feel left out, you are my special guest. Thank you.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? You know, we also have Kathy Laufel with us today. She's the executive director of the Victim Services Union, St. Louis Circuit Attorney's Office. She's also a member of the St. Louis Family Violence Council. In this month is Family Violence Awareness Month, and we have her with us today. Let's give her a round of applause for all the work that they do. If you have a moment today prior to her leaving, if you can go over and talk to her about all the great works they're doing at the Family Violence Council and also at the Circuit Attorney's Office, it can be really helpful in each and every one of our wards. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, you want to wrap this up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on October 6th, is on this day in 1957 that Leave the Beaver debuted. It was on this day in 1961 that JFK told everyone in the United States to go out and buy a bomb shelter. But most importantly, this is National Noodle Day, so go out tonight, hang out with your favorite noodle. I'll be out with the alderman from the 23rd. Thank you.
All right, please. All right, Alderman from the 18th, recognized on approval of the minutes.
Over here. Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the minutes of July 7th, July 14th, and September 8th be approved.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. I have from her honor the mayor, the following correspondents. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the following board. The appointment of Nina North Murphy, who resides in the 8th ward, whose term will expire on October the 1st, 2018, to the St. Louis Developmental Disability Resources Board. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 8th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to St. Louis Developmental Disability Resource Board.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I would move for approval of the mayor's appointment to the Developmental Disability Resources Board.
Moved by Alderman from the 8th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We also have with us Sea Shark today. Sea, thank you for coming out. Sea Sharp is very active throughout our community, helping youth all throughout our community with every free moment he has. Madam Clerk.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for the appointment to the following board. Appointment of Dr. Cynthia Mueller, Ph.D., who resides in the 12th ward, and whose term will expire on October the 1st, 2018, to the St. Louis Developmental Disabilities Resources Board. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 12th, you recognize to the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Developmental Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I ask that Dr. Cynthia L. Mueller for approval to be appointed to the disability board.
Moved by Alderman from the 12th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the following board. The appointment of Patricia Coleman, who resides in the 23rd ward, and whose term will expire on December 31st, 2018, to the Metropolitan Zoological Park and Museum District Board. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Metropolitan Zoological Park and Museum Districts. That's easy for you to say. Say it twice. Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move for the appointment of Patricia Coleman to the Metropolitan Zoological Parks and Museum District Board. Moved by Alderman from the 23rd, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
We will dispense with line items seven and eight. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items nine through 10. First reading of board bill.
Board Bill 134, sponsored by Alderwoman Green and Honors concerning the protection of First Amendment rights of protesters, repealing ordinance 15.52.010 and enacting in lieu thereof and of it clarifying policies relating to improvement, improving police community relations with the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department and limiting the use of chemical agents. Board Bill 135, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors, recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the First Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement for fleet vehicles and special service equipment maintenance repair services to the Professional Service Agreement for fleet vehicles and special equipment maintenance repair service between the city and complete auto body and repair containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 136, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors pertaining to leases on an unimproved warf, repealing ordinance 66275, and enacting a new ordinance authorizing the Port Authority Commission within six months prior to the expiration, extension, execution, or renewal of any lease on the unimproved warf to negotiate the rates and other terms of conditions of lease, and if such fails to advertise for proposals in the newspapers of general circulation, the City Journal, and trade journals of the national publications, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 137, sponsored by Alderwoman Green and Honors to revise section 17.76.020 of the revised code of the city, ordinance 67757, section 1, approved November the 5th, 2007, pertaining to residential disabled parking to allow an eligible person whose vehicle is owned by another to apply for a residential disabled parking space permit. Board Bill 138, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Honors, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver the Fifth Supplemental Trust and Denture, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof superseding provisions of prior ordinances of the city to the extent inconsistent with the terms hereof and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 139, sponsored by Alderman Moore pursuant to ordinance 68937, and ordinance authorizing honorary street name Norma Leggett Lane will begin at the intersection of Bishop P.L. Scott and Garfield and run southeast on Garfield to North Vander Vinner. Board Bill 140, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and Honors approving a redevelopment plan for 5335 Gilson Avenue. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 135 and 136, to the Streets Committee, Board Bills 137, 139, to the Housing Committee, Board Bill 138, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 140. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 76, sponsored by Alderman Gunther and Honors approving redevelopment plan for 1956 Utah. Board Bill 77, sponsored by Alderman Gunther and Honors approving redevelopment plan for 2918 Wyoming. Board Bill 78, sponsored by Alderman Gunther and Honors approving redevelopment plan for 2821 Texas. Board Bill 79, sponsored by Alderman Gunther and Honors approving a redevelopment plan for 3021 Texas. Board Bill 100, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and Honors approving redevelopment plan for 5219 Daggett. Board Bill 116, sponsored by Alderman Honowitz and Honors approving redevelopment plan for 3830 and 3831 Boulevard Heights Court. The following board bills were reported out of Streets Committee, Board Bill 131, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors pursuant to ordinance 68937, and ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Elder Benny Lee Thompson Street, which shall begin at the intersection of Sheridan and Webster and run east on Sheridan to North Garrison. Board Bill 133, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin and Honors recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate the above surface, surface, and subsurface travel on Prim Street from Riley. The following board bill was reported out of Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 122, sponsored by Alderman Conway and Honors recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing supplemental appropriation, amending ordinance 70540, commonly referred to as the City Annual Operating Plan for fiscal year 2017 through 2018, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $1,910,000 from revenues accruing to the local use tax fund and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
We dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 113, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Honowitz, President Reed, Alderwoman Howard, and Alderwoman Murphy pursuant to ordinance 68937, and Honors authorizing honorary street name S. Sergeant Ron Vasquez, U.S. Army, Green Beret, Street will begin at the intersection of Livingston Drive and Fillmore Street and run northwest on Fillmore Street to Coronado Avenue. Board Bill 195, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and-
Ninety-five.
I'm sorry, Board Bill 95, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the Hunter Engineering Lease Agreement, AL004, between the city and Hunter Engineering, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 102, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the TransStates Holding Incorporated Airport Office Building Lease Agreement, AL055, between the city and TransStates Holding Incorporated, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 107, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, that provides for financial incentive for air service at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, determines and finds that it is in the best interest of the city, the airport, and the traveling public to encourage service at the airport by new passenger and cargo airlines, and to stimulate service by airlines currently using the airport by the adoption of programs providing for financial incentives for new airlines or new air service at the airport adopts air service incentive program for fiscal year 2018 through 2020, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 108, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of $1,600,000 of excess monies that the city owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport intends to transfer from the Airport Development Fund to the Airport Contingency Fund between the city as grantor of UM Bank and UM Bank as trustee authorizing transfer in the total amount of $1,600,000 from the Airport Development Fund into the Airport Contingency Fund, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 109, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing the multi-year public work and improvement program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, providing for and consisting of the capital improvement projects, implementation, administration, management, and monitoring of the airport projects at a total estimated cost of $110 million, authorizing an initial appropriation in a total amount of $79,01684, as five, $5,887,470 from the Airport Development Fund, $15,122,946 from the Passenger Facility Fund, $31,402,134 from the Series 2017 Construction Subaccount, $26,598,134 from the Series 2017 Deconstruction Subaccount, containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 110, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport to accept the supplemental agreement to a airport aid agreement offered by the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for marketing and promotions of air service at the airport for a maximum obligation of $592,000 for the reimbursement of direct costs associated with the projects funded under the grant agreement, which extends the time of the supplemental agreement for three months, from June the 30th, 2016 up to and including September the 30th, 2016, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 111, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and, to accept and execute a certain airport aid agreement offered by the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the marketing and promotion of air service at the airport for a maximum obligation of $375,000 for the reimbursement of direct costs associated with the projects funded under the grant agreement and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 112, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the First Amendment to the Wi-Fi and Distributed Antenna System Operating Agreement, AL263, to the St. Louis Lambert International Airport Wi-Fi and Distributed Antenna System Operated Agreement, AL263, between the city and Concurse Communications Group, containing a severability and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 1st. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 19th, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have permission to suspend the rules.
All right.
I'd like to move the following board bills from the perfection consent calendar to third reading consent calendar. Board Bills number 113AA, Board Bill 95, Board Bill 102, Board Bill 107, Board Bill 108, Board Bill 109, Board Bill 110, Board Bill 111, and Board Bill 112.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 19th that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills to the third reading consent calendar, and it's been seconded by Alderman from the 14th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Twenty-six, aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 19th, and place the aforementioned bills on third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please place board bills 113 as amended, 95, 102, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, and 112 at the end of the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Third reading. We will dispense with line item 16, third reading consent.
Board Bills 118, 114, 113 as amended, 95, 102, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, and 112.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we approve the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, and seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Twenty-seven, aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 18th, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading, report of engrossments.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 118, 114, 113 as amended, 95, 102, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, and 112.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofu to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the 4th.
Mr. President, is it too early or premature to ask that IM Bank Resolution Number 139?
We'll come, we'll come in. He said 139.
Alderman from the 19th, recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I ask for consideration for the approval of the courtesy resolution consent calendar.
It's been moved by all in front of 19th that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar, seconded by all in front of 1st. Alderman from the 4th. You're asking about a resolution on the courtesy resolution? Oh.
Goodbye, Alderwoman Spencer and Sharon Tyus.
Okay, all right. Listen, Alderwoman from the 1st, she knows what it's going to... She'll direct you on what to... Okay. 19th motion. It's been moved by all in front of 19th, seconded by all in front of 1st, that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Lanis, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Today is the employee appreciation picnic immediately following the full board meeting today. Tuesday, we have Public Safety Committee meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Also on Tuesday, Streets meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Also on Tuesday, Neighborhood Development Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Also on Thursday, Public Employees Committee meeting at 1:30 in the Leisure Room. Friday, October the 13th, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderwoman from the 14th.
Good morning, esteemed colleagues and Mr. President. I would like to announce that Das Bevo, the former Bevo Mill, at the corner of Morganford and Graboy is celebrating their centennial with a Oktoberfest celebration that started last night. They're going to have bands, the Oompa Pa, the Waterloo German Band, games, prizes, fun, 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 last night, today, and tomorrow. Stop on by the newly renovated, world famous, only in St. Louis, Bevo Mill, and come by and have a beer and enjoy some of the Oktoberfest festivities and their celebration of their 100th, centennial celebration of the Bevo Mill here in St. Louis. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would just like to get up and say I would like to have my name added to Board Bill 139 on the honorary street sign for Miss Leggett. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
Alderman from the 21st.
Mr. President, I would also like my name added on as a co-sponsor to Board Bill 139.
All right, make note of that change. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? As you all know, and some of the newer aldermen may not have participated in the past, but today we honor all of our city employees by having the members of the board of aldermen. We'll go out and we'll serve them lunch. We work with various different partners to be able to provide enough food every year to be able to feed every city employee that shows up. The city employees really, really enjoy it, and then it gives you an opportunity to talk to them and to thank them for the great work that they do each and every day for us. They're, you know, as you all know, they're underpaid and underappreciated, so this gives us an opportunity to at least show them some appreciation once a year. So the first lunch hour is right around 11:30, so if you can start making your way down, downstairs, it's in the parking lot right behind us, right around 10 after, quarter after 11, that way we're ready when they come and we can begin serving lunches and thanking them for the work that they do every year. And it's a festive, it's a festive occasion, so I really would appreciate it if you do not have anything else pressing to make it down there today. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th. You recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the alderperson from the 6 be excused for necessary absence.
Alderman from the 21st.
Real quick, this past Wednesday was our colleague's birthday, Alderman Brandon Bosley.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
He's 74.
Oh, yeah. I'll give you a few of my years. Remember that, Will Trey. Will Trey. It's been moved by all in front of 18th that we excuse Alderwoman from the 6, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 21st. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, October 13th, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by all in front of 18th, seconded by all in front of 10th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand adjourned.